additions, corrections, deletions, whatever. All in favor?
Aye.
Carried. Moving to citizens comments. So anyone in the audience wishing to address the board? If not, we'll move to James and company.
It's been awhile, James.
Oh, hello. I have got a copy too.
He's already been signed.
What? Signing stuff up there?
Well, apparently, I'm looking at stuff I signed two weeks ago.
Thank you, James. Partly what we're going through here is that the PDD that covers Fowkes Island project needs to be updated. And this is all.
What's your question?
What it is? Going down Lock Street to apartments? Plan, development, district?
Good evening, Board. A week and a half or so ago, I had a meeting with the mayor's office and village staff in regards to Fowkes Island, which everyone knows is the area land, I believe everyone on the village board knows where it is, behind the Dunkin' Donuts, former DBW site working along Lock Street. Two 26-unit apartment projects sit there currently right now. So, in the conversation, we requested a potential modification of the PDD in the initial approval in 2015. You had two apartment buildings, then you had 22 apartment homes, and then eight other condominium-style units that were very similar, that would work in the center section, then 10 single-family homes. I'm showing you our proposed new layout. Mr. Ritchie and Dino stand up, hold that side, so they can see, proposed new, I'll give you, and then your packet, you have all this information, our letter, and then two plans. So this figure one in your packet is the approved plan. Figure two, to my right, is the proposed plan. So we would remain with the same number of units on the site, but just a little bit different design of the site. We would come in with a 24-unit garden-style apartment. If you want to see what this building looks like in real life, it's being, it's a little bit larger building, it's a 36-unit building in the town of Clay at the corner of Barron Buckley. But that building has another appendage coming off. What you would see along Barron Buckley is this building, 24 units, three stories. And in each little pod, there's four per floor. And here, there would be a community center, that would be for the complex and some meeting rooms. And that's what we are looking to modify. One of the reasons of the modification, when we were going through lot aid over here with the village board, and for the approval of that house and the subdivision, flood plains, floodway, and some wetlands have modified over the years since the initial approvals that we had with the village. So, we are looking for the board's consideration of this, and then if you would be willing to consider to recommend us to the planning board to continue the process and discussion. So, we bring this to you schematically tonight for your initial consideration. So, right over here is the second building, access off of Lock. We would come in and build a parallel road, similar to what we had before, and then have these facing the front, open areas that face the river, the walking trail coming up with the connection points here, and here, Margaret, and down here at Tabor. But it's really start the process. If we could get the modification, these units would start construction this year. We're working through some stuff with agencies as it relates to flood plains for the lots, lots 10, 9, 8, 8, which has a house on it, 10 and 9, a single-family residential could be built. As you work this way, just how, as I said, regulations with the DEC and Army Corps of Engineers have changed, lots 7, 6, and 5 are a little bit more difficult. So we are working with the agencies to figure out, maybe two of these lots have to be combined to get one home, and then we don't show the rest of it where it goes off the end of woods where the remaining four lots sit. So, that is what we're doing. Item number eight on our agenda, as well as another thing relating to Fowkes Island, asking for a continuation or an extension in time to complete the project. So, that is what we are here for this evening, to potentially start the process with the village board, go to the planning board, back to the village board, and working with legal, engineering, and BPW.
Can we wrap my memory versus yours? Original site plan?
Yeah.
As I recall, in my memory, it was all townhouses at Phase. There were no apartments in Phase 2. So when I look at original site plan, this is closer to the original site plan you brought to us a couple of weeks ago.
Right here, this right here?
Yeah.
So this approval, right here, these were apartment homes, these were townhomes. So if you look.
So these blocks are apartment homes?
Yeah, so they're, they're four-unit apartment buildings. So like, you had four units with garages into each, this was a four-unit building, six-unit building, four-unit, four-unit, and four. So, the scenario in terms of the floodway and floodplain, these buildings would get eliminated, so, you know, you would take eight units right out of the development just with, you know, regulatory stuff. Even though the system is controlled by locks, you know, we really get into the joint commission between the US and the Canadian government of how they control the water in Lake Ontario, how it goes through, you know, the Erie Canal system. And we can't get a modification to those lines based on some of the heparazide models that are studied. So, our hope is just a modification to the design, so we can get the same number of units, build.
Something you brought up, that the number of units wasn't significantly different.
It's the exact same. So there's a total of 30 units between here and here, so this was eight and 22, this is 24 and 6. So, no change in overall density to the site, it's just the change in the building type and design. We would come back to the planning board and to your board with elevations, if it's something that folks would consider, so they can see the look and the character and the architectural elements that are on the two existing buildings would be carried through with this development. As I said, the walking trail is going to go in this spring and summer, and then so people can continue walking through this area. This little section, when Chuck and I were out there the other day with one of the Alborichis, we talked about getting that in sooner than later, because they really walk up the trail to get to this portion, and then they either turn around or they cut through the parking lot. So, making this connection, one of the other things that was requested is just, you know, leave, you know, brush hogging or mowing the property throughout the season. So, we've already done that twice this season, and we plan to continue that on, on a monthly basis, if it needs to be mowed more to keep it looks, it looks looking good. It's helpful, because when we met out on site, you know, if it gets a little high, some of the neighbors like using it as a potential dumping ground for beds, couches, auto parts, other things. So, we're looking to work with the village to bring this to culmination, so you can close out, we can close out this project, and you can add some additional tax base to the village.
Does he have any questions?
James, remind me, in Phase, in the original Phase 2, were these units going to be rental, or owner-occupied, or a combo, and what's the plan for?
So, originally, the 22 apartment homes were all rentals. The townhomes would have a firewall, so they could have either been for sale or for rent. You know, if they were for sale, they would either be through decovenance restrictions. We, you know, with eight units going to an HOA through the Attorney General's process, we were going to work, so Ritchie and Dino from Castella, Cuny, and Furion, he's our attorney on the project, along with John Langley, we would work through that. So same thing in here, this building is very similar, so townhomes, firewalls, if you want to see what these look like, if you drive in Timberbanks Parkway, on the left-hand side, large apartment buildings on the right, as you're heading back to the golf person clubhouse, they have 24 of these units and combos of twos and fours. Just with the area here, we went to a six-unit combo, but there would be two-story garages on this side, living out the back, so they have the river. We still keep open sightlines for people to see through to the river, giving some more area than the green space.
To be honest, two weeks ago, three weeks ago, James said Mr. Alborichi was no longer interested in owning, or renting them, owning, he wanted to sell them.
Correct, the ones in Timberbanks.
He's had an experience with it.
Correct, you know.
So these townhomes, you wouldn't anticipate being?
Correct, you would, correct, so.
That's what you were asking, I think.
Correct.
Because I couldn't remember what the original.
100%, so there's actually 24 along the main road, four on the side, 28, that when he built them, they was renting, and they just with, some owners on one side, some people renting, it's like, you know, let's just sell them all, so they're all for sale, if anyone wants to buy them, please stop and Kevin Hamlet selling them.
So in terms of us referring this back to the planning board, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, that's contingent upon us passing the extension? So then it goes, then it will go back?
Yes. With respect to the local law, and I've drafted a local law which would make that change, but the, what would happen would be the language, 22 apartment homes, eight townhomes, would be changed to read the garden, let's say, garden-style apartment building and the, and six townhomes.
Yeah, or you could use the word apartment homes, whatever you want to do. Townhomes is better, you know, just because that's truly from a building code style, that's what they are, firewalls through where apartments.
Well, and on your, on your map, they're referred to as Timberbanks Townhouse.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the only other thing that would need to be done, and I don't know if you want to discuss this now, or when the resolution comes up.
I'm thinking maybe we should jump down to Adam G., if you want, just to.
Okay. In the original, in the original PDD, local law, there was a deadline to complete the entire project. My proposal is that we go ahead, because we're going to be changing this whole section anyway, to put in a new date. Now, they gave five years originally, and if we put in 2030.
Just with the consideration of the board to do this, we would like to shorten that date and window, so there's a confidence it's getting done. So, you know, as soon as we would get through the approval process with the boards, you know, I would use the statement as, we would obtain a building permit for those apartments, you know, within 90 days. So, we can get a building permit, and then the construction typically takes a year of time to do. So I don't know, in the resolution, you can pick a date for when COs are given, or other places we've worked lately, they just want to make sure upon approval.
Oh, and so, the trouble is, this is in the local law.
Okay.
So what I would, what I could do is, will be concluded with, by the, let's say, within two years after the site plan approval. If that's okay, because here's the other thing.
In the PDD, it also gave them provision, if something goes crazy, to come in and ask for a status.
Like a pandemic, or something?
We need to keep a little better track of it.
Right.
So that if, if there are some problems or something happens, then we work with Alborichi to grant an extension, you know, so that we don't run into this again. So I will, I'll get this local law out there, and if you want, we can have a public hearing at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so, as I said, we're willing to truncate the time because of the duration of time, and they really just want to come in and complete it, because here, going out and mowing and taking, and we do appreciate you picking up, you know, some of the stuff that was by others, you know, it becomes a great dumping grounds. So we really would like to get in, get out, complete the trails, have all the connections, you know, and keep something that, you know, the village is proud of.
Sounds good.
So, so does this get referred to the planning board now, or after that? It's just for scheduling from, you know, my purpose, just working with folks in my office?
We refer it now, and then, they may want to be the lead, because of the wetlands issue, they may want to be lead agency as far as seekers concerned, so we can.
There's a possibility that they would want to modify something that affects the PDD language even.
Well, except that the language itself, I mean, they could, they could do that, but the language itself, because we can, we can have a public hearing on this, and you don't, there's no requirement that you vote on it immediately, in other words, it doesn't have to be voted on immediately. There's no, nothing that says that if you don't vote within two weeks, it becomes law or something. So, we could, we could do that, but the, as I say, we could refer, you could adopt a resolution if you want to, which would grant the extension retroactively and refer it to the planning board.
Does the planning board need on-demand, or is that something that they have a scheduled thing anyway?
We'll submit an, so we'll submit, we'll take this and we'll submit whatever application, you know, the building office wants to formalize the process, so if there's some paperwork or fees or other stuff that we need to submit.
Yeah, maybe site plan review.
They tend to meet once a month, but if there's, wasn't something special, they might meet.
So if it's the last Thursday of the month that we're going to have our next meeting anyway, so this should be all out of the way before then?
Yep. Yeah. Scheduling wise, it makes sense.
So you can adopt, I mean, if you want to wait in the, in the agenda, or you could do it now while they're here, just adopt a resolution retroactively granting the extension to complete the project, and in that same resolution, refer this matter to the planning board.
Then when would the public hearing occur, at what point?
Our next meeting, which won't be until the middle of July because of the 4th.
Russell, did you make?
No, we have.
20, it'll be on the 20th.
You also need to make that part of the resolution, though.
I would like to do whatever we need to authorize them to approach the planning board, so that, so those wheels are in motion.
Yeah, so they know that we've been to you, and you have referred it to the planning board to look at the modifications to the PDD, so they just don't think we're walking in going like, hey, we haven't been here to talk to you.
So, okay, whatever we need to do to do that, that's what I would like to see us do.
Okay, I mean, that's, as I said, have a resolution. The, we don't need a resolution to, relative to the local law, because it's not being adopted, it's just being sent out for public hearing. So you can.
Need a motion to refer them to the planning?
Yeah, you can make a motion to have a public hearing on the local law at the next meeting.
Okay, and how about the referral to the planning board?
As I say, that can all be part of a.
Same motion or separate motion?
Yeah, you could, you could put that all in one motion, that you, you retroactively grant the extension, refer the matter to the planning board, and set a public hearing on the 20th of June for the proposed local law to Section 345-116 of the Code.
Someone make the motion to what Bob said?
I can give that to Jody.
Do we hear a second?
I'll stick around.
Yep, any discussion? Well, concern I'm down here about public hearing dates and, okay.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carried.
We appreciate you taking number eight up to four A, so we appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
You too.
And I just say, if there is something, because we will be mowing monthly, but if something comes up and it's, and we're not looking at it, and in two weeks, there's a lot of rain, it goes up, you know, Mayor, give me a call or email, Chuck knows how to track me down, but, you know, you have a commitment that that will be taken care of, you know, throughout the growing season. We appreciate that. Thanks.
Okay, moving on to trustees comments. Eric?
Just want to add an agenda item. It's a motion for the emergency expenditure for a pump motor for number two at Donwell at a cost of $11,775. And I'll stick to the agenda.
Can we add that motion, where is that money supposed to come from?
When we get to it on the agenda, we can.
We can discuss it further.
I'm going to call an executive session for this matter.
Okay, so that's aye.
And I'll pull up, I'll say it's going to be brief.
Okay. Megan?
Under new business item B, I'd like to amend that motion to remove the Friday, June 7th date. And other than that, I will stick to the agenda.
Ruth?
I think I'll stick with the agenda tonight.
Okay. You ready, Nate?
Yeah, no, I'll let you stick with the agenda.
Sure enough.
No, we're going to, we're going to wait for him to draft the word.
Okay, well, I'm not going to add anything to the agenda, but I am going to mention that the New York State Legislative Session ended today, and that means Senator May is available to meet with me and anybody, I'm looking at you, chief, you know, concerning the pedestrian safety issues, and how to go about addressing them and getting action from the DOT in the most delicate and diplomatic way possible, as I've discussed with Chuck. It's on June 26 at 2:00 PM. Would like to attend, I think that would be great.
Where's that meeting going to occur, here, or?
Uh, no, it's at Senator May's office.
Senator May's office, okay.
In Syracuse.
Could you send me an email on that?
I sure will.
Steve, thank you.
Yeah, I just got it, you know, late this afternoon.
Okay, moving on to me. I have a list of things. The joy of going to various meetings, you get handed stuff and asked to, if we could make a known, Allen County participates in a childcare, this isn't necessarily for anybody in the audience, but people on the camera. It's a childcare enhancement grant program that almost all residents will qualify for. If anybody's having challenges with childcare, the county contracts with an organization called Child Care Enhancement Grants with Child Care Solutions, they recommend you contact Kathleen Gardner at 315-446-1220, extension 332, or email at ccs@childcaresolutionscny.org. This is to help people locate childcare providers and to provide financial assistance where people are qualified. Okay, what was the next thing? Pro-Housing. There's a Pro-Housing Community webinar available, specifically looking at trustees, if you would like to attend, June 10th, from 12 to 1:00. I have this little QR code, you can zip in and register. Got, that's available. June 19th, there's a joint ZBA Planning Board and this board meeting to review Bronz Loft Project, I think that's what it's called, the Bronz Lofts. They just want to make sure that as much of the village is on board with the direction they're going before they invest too many hundreds of thousands of dollars in it. So this will be everybody's opportunity to give input.
Mayor, what time is that?
7:00, I believe, wasn't that, Jody, do you know, 7:00 PM?
Thank you.
And it'll be here, because there's nowhere else to can hold us. And I hope there's no court on Juneteenth, that's Wednesday.
The building's closed then.
Okay. Want to also remind everybody that our next meeting on June 20th, our work session's going to be dedicated to GoGov presentation, it's one of those electronic ways of reaching out to citizens. Some of you maybe have already seen the presentation, was GoGov the one that maybe Megan and Ruth looked at?
They, so.
Is it the same company, or?
No, it was one of the ones from last.
Okay, I can't remember which one I.
So they're going to do that for the whole board?
Good.
See whether it's something we're interested in. Next order of business, next Wednesday is an Association of Mayors' Meetings. I've been asked to invite trustees, clerks, if you, if you want to come, there's no cost to attend the meeting unless you want to eat, and then it costs you $20. For me, that's, means I don't have to make dinner, so I don't care. But, we meet at the Village Hall in Liverpool at 6:00. If anybody knows you want to go, if he could let me know, I will call Dick Waterman while I'm on the road and tell him. Final thing that I'm bringing up, I think, no, it's not, yes, it is. I'm going to ask you guys if you could all, does everybody have your codebooks? If you could look and see if Chapter 242 contains an Article 2. If it doesn't, could you go online to E360, Baldwinsville? I'd like you to review Chapter 242, Article 2, in relationship to food trucks, as they become more and more prevalent in the community. We don't, currently, we don't register them, we don't really do much of anything with them.
242, did you say?
That's what I said, yes. If you could take a look at that, I've got some nice sample codes from East Aurora and some other communities, if you want to see those. Other than that, I think I'll stick to the agenda. Moving on to department heads, Bob?
We did talk about the sewer matter, and do you want a local law prepared for the next meeting as well, and have a public hearing on that? I can, or do you want me to just send it around and do it at the meeting after? I don't know how, how quickly the board wants to get that resolved.
We do it at the next meeting.
Okay, I'll get it done at the, I'll do it for the next meeting. Other than that, I'll stick with the agenda.
So, just to be clear, we, would we have the public meeting at the next?
No, no, we would get the public hearing scheduled for the following meeting.
So you're going to?
I think Bob was saying that he could get it so that the public hearing was at the next meeting as well.
You would be able to?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and that's fine.
One of the key things in that, Bob, is trying to determine a date. I don't know if we communicated that to you, of when the program would begin, if we could go retroactively to like, the beginning of the fiscal year, or some arbitrary date out there somewhere. That was discussed, I don't know if they mentioned that to you.
No, but I, so the effective date of the local law, you want it retroactively effective for the beginning of this fiscal year?
That was my thought.
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, then do we need to make a motion to set that public hearing?
Yes.
So Nate's adding.
My mistake, Bob.
So now you're aye.
Okay, yeah.
And the executive is j, so I is Nate. Okay.
And that's it.
Move to the village clerk.
I don't have anything, I'll stick to the agenda, but if anybody needs to find that E360, just go to the codes page, the code department, and it's the first, it's the first link on there, if anyone's having trouble finding that.
The other thing's Google, E360 Baldwins.
Or Google.
Okay.
But go to the village website, because it's always good to be on there.
I watched Jody struggle on.
Well, we need to fix that.
Okay, moving to our treasurer.
Just a couple of things, number one.
Just a couple of things, number one, just a reminder, item A F on the agenda is that ban resolution, and that will, when passed, will enable us to close on a ban tomorrow at Salve Bank, and we will repay the general fund for paying for that bucket truck. And it's kind of a bridge until we get the second plow truck, which will be either later this year, late this year, or early next year, and we'll roll it all into a statutory installment bond. That's number one. Number two, there's a couple of very big expenses on the, on the abstract tonight, and just want to be sure you're clear about how they're all going to, how they will go through the system. Number one is the Canton Woods Center roof, which is done, is a hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred dollars roughly. That's fully paid for by bonds, is what our understanding is, or not bonds, by grants. And, but the grants are not going to be received for probably a year. So, I just want to be sure the board knows that we're carrying that until we receive those grants, and I think the confidence is high that we'll get the grants, but, you know, that's, that's where that is.
Well, we have, have you received the hundred thousand dollar portion of it yet?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, but.
I wonder if there's any process we have to go through?
I thought that was delayed though, until, you know, for a while, I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, I know when I talked to Ruth about that, she was assured that you'd be, we'd be able to put in for that, and that money was available. Maybe that's changed, but that's where it was when, when we did that, for the hundred, for the first hundred thousand.
That would be great.
Don't, you don't have to know, Joan.
All I know is there's an August date.
That it's, it's gone at the end of Aug.
Right.
I can dig back through emails that I corresponded with Ruth quite a while ago with who her contact was downtown. And maybe some of us need to get ahold of her now that Ruth's gone.
So I think that might involve, like, lighting a fire under the contractor then, because I think we need a certified payroll or something from them?
Right, I believe, I believe we do have that now, there were some questions because it was done in a county, county contract, we don't, they weren't sure if we had to do that, but regardless, we'll get that. She called me and she said it had to be handwritten, and I think I have that now. I think it's with the bill, but it just came in.
All right, perfect. Second bill that's on here is the, the electric at the Canton Street well, that's a hundred and seventy-one, six eighty-four. That's been, some of that is covered by grants. I probably owe the board like a recap of the Canton well project between the fluoride and the electric and all that stuff, and just how it's all being covered by grants from the state. And, but we got to pay this bill, and, and that's fine, we have the money to do it, so I just want you to be aware of that. And for the next meeting, I won't be here at the next meeting, because I have a graduation to go to, out of town, but I will have a report for you before the next meeting of how all that's being funded, and what the, what the impact is on the, the water fund, because some of it will come out of the village's pocket. Let me think, that's actually it, unless you have any questions? Oh, at the next meeting also, without me being here, I will have some budget modifications for you, because we're, we're already into that just a little bit, some really minor ones, but we're already moved into that. And, oh, and to the point about the pump for the, for the Donwell, the water fund has a pretty decent sized budget for projects right now, so I'm sure that it will be able to shoulder that expense.
I, I just have one question, I know, like this last year, we adopted a resolution retaining the services of a, a grant specialist, I'm just wondering if we've had any contact with that person or?
I had one contact with her, she was working on, going to work on a project, but the engineering end of it hasn't developed to the point where she can do that. So I may try and redirect her in different directions.
Yeah, I just didn't know if you were dealing with her at all.
I'm not, but I'd be, I mean, I'd be happy to do that, and, you know, I think we could find a lot of things, Bert.
Yeah, in fact, Donna, if you could write down C-R-I-S-I-S.
C-R-I-S?
That, that is a consolidate the rail infrastructure, something or other, and they were putting out potentially grants. Thinking of pedestrians, it drives me crazy when I go up Anita Street and you cross the railroad and there's no sidewalk, there's no guards, there's nothing, it's just school kids. And of course, Donna, on East Genesee Street, there's no, the rail comes out for the cars, but there's nothing for pedestrians that, that maybe, and that is a.
Crisis.
Big fund, yes. And maybe there'd be help from the Senator on that also.
Okay.
But that's something I was thinking of getting ahold of Susan and have her look at that possible also.
That's it.
So that's it.
Okay. Everybody know Joan?
Hi.
Unless you hang out at the senior center.
Hello. I honestly don't know what to say, so I'm going to wing it here. Thanks everybody for Ruth's part, uh, support for Ruth's retirement, I think it was a really nice part, and she had a really good time. So thank you for that, otherwise Canton Woods is still going strong, we're having a craft sale tomorrow, we're still doing the farmer's market coupons, we're still doing the produce boxes through Underdog County, Emmys Farms supplies those. We are moving forward with the car show, I got an okay that we're going to have support to move forward with the car show with or without an director, and other than that, things are still moving forward.
And we thank you for that.
I'm trying.
And if you need help, call Ruth.
Okay, well, she told me I could, so I will definitely take her up on that.
And you said farmer's market, and that reminds me that I believe the farmer's market in Baldwinsville starts on the 18th.
That's correct.
What I recall, so.
So that's a Tuesday, Tuesday?
Tuesday before our next board meeting, so that's exciting to have.
And if people don't know, strawberries in at Emmys and stuff, so if you don't want to go out, Emmys, come down here on Tuesday.
That's it?
Okay, well, thank you very much. Move to DPW.
We're right in summer mode now, I think all the flowers are up, all the summer stuff, the canoe and the kayak rentals are up and running, all the ramps are in. Over on, we're having Lily's show over on the wall with some boaters that are staying there longer than they should, the police are giving me a hand, they're going to try to move some of that with the county, with their boat patrol to get some of those moved. I left a couple notes on them today, and they actually called me back. So that's, that, that's going well. We did, we did a little more cleanup on the island, we should be all set for this weekend. Had some tree damage yesterday, today in the parks, a little bit, not too, too much. We just finished a little project between Sal's and, or up there on East Genesee Street and the, the village hardware, the sidewalk was a mess, it was just, it was terrible in there, and we had some, some money from the 2019 grant that was in that scope of work, and we're able to get that done. And that whole thing took place in like two weeks and it was done, and if, if, if you haven't had a chance, it came out great, it really, those bollards were a mess, they're half in the sidewalk, those got taken out.
Sidewalk was pavement?
Half was pavement, half was, and it was just, it, it was probably one of the worst parts of sidewalk in the downtown. The business owners there are thrilled with it, it came out really nice, and.
Have you walked down the new walk?
Yes, I have. I fell into some potholes before it was fixed, so.
It was really bad, and.
I'm surprised you hadn't been issued it before.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, and the business owners, because I know the village hardware, that a lot of that is in front of his place and his, and he was thrilled, and so, so were some of the others, it, it came out nice. We're hoping that our lift for the mechanic that we've been trying to get in for quite a few months, ARPA, ARPA money is helping us do it, maybe in next week. So that'll be a great improvement up there, because we've been wanting a lift now for probably, well, Mike could probably tell me, two and a half months, because we haven't worked on many police cars since then. But hopefully that'll be up and running next week and we back, back to normal. And Joan, just so you know, the, the blacktop for your walking trail over there, we had some trouble getting the company back, our attorney wrote a letter, and they said they'd be back, and they gave us a date, and then there was a rain problem. I talked to them this week again, we're not on the, we're not on the schedule for them to come and finish, but I'm hoping they get back here and finish that, you know, because then we can really dress the area up, and we're just waiting for them to come put their, their top coat on. So other than that, are there most, most questions?
Actually, is there any way to fix so that, um, the sides of it, can the DPW fill that in, or can't you do that until he does his part?
Well, he needs to come back over that, then we'll, 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 we'll topsoil all around it, and we were really hoping that would be done, because after Bob sent a letter, it looked like they were going to come right out, and it just hasn't happened. And, and it, and I told him, it's a mess over there, and I see people are using it though, I.
They do use it, almost daily, you have people out there.
Yeah, yeah, and Ruth was thrilled with that, yeah, yeah.
Yes, but it's a little, you know, it's, you can twist your ankle easily.
Once you get on, right up on there, okay, but.
Right.
We want to finish it, and just going to get them back there.
Yeah, I, I have, I just, I received an email from Brian Austin this afternoon.
Oh, good.
In, in which he says he will, he will continue to follow up with the manufacturer, they still don't have any new update at this point, I've asked our supplier to put something in writing to support our continued efforts.
Oh, that's on the, you mean on the, um.
Security.
Security, okay, yeah, okay, yeah, thank you for that. We're, we're kind of dead in the water with that project. But you seem to get their attention, I hope we can get them moving.
Lawyers have that impact.
Yeah, it's okay. We get a response right away with Bob's letter.
It's a liability issue, I mean, if they get hurt on our walk, it's.
We're going to move on to the police department, Chief Levon check.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple items just to mention, first, obviously on May 30th, we had our Memorial Day Parade, and from the police department side of the house, Lieutenant Mike Lockwood sits on the parade committee, but more importantly, he really writes the operational plan for that whole event. And requires a lot of coordination amongst a whole host of entities. Chuck's people come in and help block some of the areas where we have a lot of folks in the street watching the parade, the four corners and things, providing some protection from, from any vehicles that might not follow directions for, for people that are manning traffic posts. We have a large contingent of our, our officers and staff on duty manning posts, we have members of the Bonsville Fire Police, from the Fire Department, of Underdog County Auxiliary Police, come in and help us out. So it, it takes a lot of people, obviously Tom and Linda Ross is the primary planners of this on the group, but there's a whole group of people, and Mike did a great job again, writing the operational plan, and every year we're coming up with new ideas and things that we want to make sure we do, and came up with a couple for next year that we're going to look to do.
I could interject, I happened to be on the other side of that door doing some work while Mike was meeting with the officers, the pre-meeting, going, not, I couldn't really tell what they were saying, but the morale was really high, everybody was really, it wasn't people grumbling about having to come in and work for the.
Well, one of the, well, Andrea and Tolly made chicken riggies, and Jenna made. Bread lobster cheddar biscuits, and I brought in desserts, and Mike brought, Mike brought in salad and bread and, and drinks, so we, we did feed everyone well, so, but, you know, we, we know that that's one of those days where.
Door closed.
We need, you could have joined us, we, we could probably could have put you on the traffic post, Mayor, but that's one of those days that we know we just have to, you know, deal with, and, and, you know, we can't cover every curb cut, because there's just so many of them, but we just hope that everything goes well, we had a lot of people watching the parade this year, I'd love to see more people in the cemetery for the, for the ceremony afterwards, because it is a very nice ceremony down there, and, but it went well, and, and I just really want to give kudos to, to Mike and, and the rest of the, the team that, that pulled that off, and, and made sure that everyone can participate, have fun, and, and enjoy the day. And I'm going to pass the word now, next year, it's going to be again on May 30th, it will start at 6 o'clock, and that's a Friday. So we're going to shut down traffic at about 5:30 or so on a Friday next year for the Memorial Day Parade.
Good luck.
Yes, so it's, it's, you know, it'll, it'll be interesting to get around the village, but it'll be done. And then also occurred at 1 o'clock that same day on, on the 30th, we held our mock DWI up at Baker High School, our school resource officer up there, Jenna Quattrini, she put together an excellent program, and we used the, the circle there off of Oswego Street for, for a couple cars to be there, and we had the whole media team from Baker High School out there videotaping, we had student actors that did an incredible job with their injuries, they looked quite gory, I, I took some photographs of them, they did a great job. I narrated, Jenna asked me to narrate, so I narrated this incident, but we had Philardo Film and Home come in and help us out, we had the Bonsville Fire Department, the Bonsville Ambulance, the sheriff's office helped us out. We had a whole host of people that came in, Judge Hugo came in, Cheryl Adsett to arraign our arrestee that we charged with, with drunken driving and vehicular homicide, Philardo's came in with, with a casket for our victim who died as a result of this crash, and we've got some great ideas for next year that we can incorporate in, and then it really played like a movie up on the screen for the students in the auditorium is where we did this this year, so that way they could hear. So I think next year we'll probably film this ahead of time, a couple, two or three weeks ahead of time, let the media team and the students there go to work and put together drone footage and other camera footage, because for this, we were kind of limited by how far the cords could go for video, but I really think next year, where this is going to be turned, turn into really something very lifelike, very powerful, very moving, and, and Jenna asked me to speak to the students after the, our arraignment took place, and I just reiterated to them that our purpose in doing this, and, and I asked them to think about all the resources that were expended for them, because we want them to survive their, their, their senior ball, we want them to survive through the graduation parties and through college, and to have productive lives, and we don't want any of their lives to be lost or ruined due to someone driving drunk and, and hurting someone else or getting killed themselves. And that's our focus on that, is to keep them alive as, as long as possible. And it was really, really powerful, it was a great event, and just kudos to Jenna and, and the team there that put that together.
Great.
That's it, unless I have questions, Mayor, from you or the board. Thank you much.
Thank you. Moving on to new business. Item A, motion to appoint the following seasonal labor in Parks Department with an effective date of May 22nd, 2024, John Oletta, Oletta, at 17:43 an hour.
Moved.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor?
Uh, real quick, how many hours are we talking for the seasonal labor, is it 40 hours? Is that what we're budgeting, or?
I think it's budgeted at 40 hours a week.
That one's kind of tough.
Thirty-eight maybe, whatever the standard work week is.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
He's only, he's only on three days a week, and then a lot of it depends on weather.
This is the guy who waters our, the plants, the flowers.
Plant water.
Yeah.
So his career will terminate when the plants are gone, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Foes, carried. Item B, motion to approve waivers of the open container law for the following Bonsville Center for the Arts events on Paper Mill Island, from 4:30 to 9:30, that was not that one, cross that off too. Saturday, June 15th, 2024, from 6:00 to 9:30 PM, Thursday, July 4th, 2024, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, Saturday, July 20th, 2024, from 1:00 to 9:00 PM, Saturday, August 3rd, 2024, from 1:00 to 9:30 PM, and Saturday, August 10th, 2024, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion. So these are open containers, not sale? Discussion. So these are open containers, not sale? So sales are gonna end, like, seven to nine, it's gonna end before nine, because the open containers have to disappear?
I didn't, I didn't put the times down, so I, not...
Okay.
I think the rule is that if the event goes until nine, then they stop selling half an hour before that. So...
Okay, I'll just, Joan was just curious, but okay. Do I have a motion?
We do have a motion.
Yeah, a second.
You were the discussion.
Your discussion.
Oh, I'm the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Uh, item C, motion to approve the computer system security breach notification policy, of which you all should have received a copy.
Motion.
Second.
Here's more discussion. When I went to mayor's school, I learned that there are six mandated policies that need to be reviewed and adopted annually. This is one.
Okay.
I'd never heard of it before. Um, we did procurement at our annual meeting. Um, last year, we did the investment policy. We'll need to be reviewing that again in this year. Um, what our H R people are handling sexual harassment, workplace violence, and looking at the code of ethics. Those are three. So they're being reviewed. All of them will come back to this body for review and adopting. So, that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. I should have told you guys out there, the, uh, security breach notification thing is so that if there were to be a breach, we have a policy on how we would reach out to citizens to inform them. It's not, it's not a breach policy protecting this. Item D, motion to approve an application for the correction of village taxes for the property located at seven, 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 four Megs Road. Tax map number zero, two, three, dot, dash, zero, one, dash, zero, three, dot, zero, for the twenty twenty-four, dash, twenty twenty-two.
Five.
Five tax year. In the amount of one hundred and nineteen dollars and sixteen cents unpaid water charged in error.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, discussion?
So we're reducing, we're reducing the?
Their tax, but I have ninety dollars.
The bill, okay.
Yep, yeah. And they had already, um, paid it, so we're just...
We'll do a refund.
Yes, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Motion to authorize the mayor to sign the main street grant contract when executed by the county. And I'm asking for that because I have no idea when the county is going to execute the documents. Um, they approved funding for six properties in the village. However, the document, nobody can start work until the document is executed and we approve it. So if it were to come in tomorrow, not a good choice of days to it as an example, but I'd like to get it signed so that people could order their windows and stuff ASAP.
Makes sense.
I'll make that motion.
Just go further, just, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item F, motion to approve and sign the ban resolution.
Motion.
I'd like a motion.
Okay, I'll second. Which one do you want? And I'll do the opposite. You, you start.
Whatever way you want it.
Jody, it's up to you.
Which you all got a copy of?
Yeah.
Just to clarify.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Any questions you want to throw, Mark, before you will? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, carried. Item G, motion to retroactively grant the Alberici construction. We did it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we took it.
Well, they were here.
Okay, good idea. Done it then. Who thought of that?
You did.
Item H.
You made me do it.
Authorization.
For the emergency expenditure to replace a motor for number two pump at Dome Well for eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second. Discussion.
Um, also, it's already ordered, I believe.
Yeah.
As an emergency, who went through the, the proper procedures to be able to do that? Yeah, you can ask where the money comes. It's coming out of the Water Department.
Well, there's a significant balance in that water fund, so I would say, I mean, relatively speaking, if it's two hundred thousand, then it might be something to talk about. But eleven grand is...
But the fund is there for.
We'll make that rigorous.
In addition, if there was a big need, there is a reserve fund of three hundred fifty thousand dollars for such.
And it's a super legitimate, you know, expense. How, how long's it been, Chuck, since the thing was?
This one, this, I bet it's four years old, and it's been rebuilt once, and once or twice it's been rewound. And, um, it, it just, we're getting a new motor. And they're, they're telling me it's gonna be two weeks out, which was unheard of. And it, I, I just wanted to let the board know, because it happened so fast. I talked to the mayor that day, and we're able to get it out, where the crane, we're able to get it out the next day, and, and it's back at the shop, and as soon as it comes in, it'll be back in again. And we just, for summertime, we need it. So I just wanted to, and like, we probably could have covered it in budget, but I just wanted to let you know, you know, because that, there's a good chunk of change.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. Okay, I is Nate.
All right, um, uh, make a motion to set up a public hearing for June twentieth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty-five P M. To change the local law to have the village take over costs on sewer lateral, lateral replacement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would note now, but we'll bring it up then also, that this is the common practice by Underdog County Sewer Department throughout the county.
So, before you make a motion to go into executive session, could I ask for an additional executive session for personnel questions that I have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Personnel or personnel?
Now.
Oh, okay. Two of us.
Okay, so we can have a motion to retire into executive session?
Second.
Could I request the first portion of that executive session that Jody, Mark, Chief, and, um, you stay around so we can hash this out?
Yeah. Chuck.
Are they attending the executive session?
Yes, please.
Are they, is there anyone required for yours that are different than those bodies?
I think mine might be the same as yours.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, is there any, Dick always said, no anticipated act. I don't, you anticipate anything?
No.
Okay, no anticipated action.
So we have a motion and a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to pay bills as audited?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-six?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.
Aren't you glad you stuck around for that one?